I now call the order, the regular session meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, April 2nd, 2013, at 6:31. Roll call.
Mayor Archie.
Here.
Vice Mayor Alahousses.
Here.
Commissioner Slattery.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Terrapini.
Here.
Tonight's dedication will be given by Reverend Kid, Signature Healthcare. Then we will have the presentation of colors following by the Boy Scout Troop 48 and Club, Cub Scout Pack 48, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Will everyone stand and please
Bow with me, please. Today, oh God, this is a night of first for many lives. We ask that your providence will be upon them and your discernment be within them. We pray for our community and that wisdom would come out of these hallways into the streets and that community will truly be built upon the peace and grace granted to us this day. Be with those around the world and we always remember our military. May your providential care watch over them and grace and peace to all this day. Amen.
Troop, attention. Color guard, forward, march. Color guard, halt. Prepare to post the colors. Post the colors. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and as a republic with which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the liberty of the citizens of our own.
Color guard, reform.
We'll all remain standing for the National Anthem being performed by Zachary Tranter.
(Singing) Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hail at the twilight's last gleaming, whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we've watched were so gallantly streaming, and the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?[272.33][272.33](Applause)
You may be seated. I would like to just acknowledge some of our former commissioners and mayors that's here with us tonight. First, we have Mayor Anita Protos here with us. We have Sal Wright. Former Commissioners Jim Archer, Norman Hill, and Jim Colianus. The first item that we have on our agenda tonight is to give Vice Mayor Alahousses a few things. It's both a sad time for all of us. I've known the Vice Mayor for a little while, but we have a couple of parts to give.[355.66][355.66](Applause) And this is the flag. It reads, "Chris Alahousses, in recognition and appreciation of dedicated and devoted service as City Commissioner 2006, 2007, 2008, '09, and '10, and as Vice Mayor of the City 2011, '12, and '13. City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, Mayor David Archie, Vice Mayor Chris Alahousses, Commissioner Susan Slattery, Commissioner Jeff Larson, and Commissioner I'd just like to say before I go to public comments, it's been a deed and honor and a privilege to sit up here and be with Vice Mayor Alahousses, someone that I've known for a few years, I'd say, since we was classmates. He probably envisioned that he might be up here one day, but I know he never envisioned he'd be up here with me.[443.19][443.19](Laughter) But he's been a true help in a sense of an individual that always tried to make decisions, and I believe on what he believed was best for the City of Tarpon. And I tell him whether we agreed or not, most of the time we did. Sometime, he saw things a little differently than I did, but he never was one to dwell on any type of issue in terms of waiting until the next issue, but always did what he thought was best for the City of Tarpon Springs. And I definitely appreciated him being the Vice Mayor, and when I couldn't be at events, he was there to perform that duty on behalf of the City of Tarpon Springs. But I tell you, thank you, and I appreciate everything that you've done for the City of Tarpon Springs and for me personally.
It was an honor. Thank you.[502.81][502.81](Applause)
Commissioner Larson?
Thank you. Vice Mayor Alahousses, Chris, I'd also like to congratulate you for your many years of service to the city. I think you and I have sat next to each other the entire time that I've been in office. We started over there, now we're here, and I think we even sat next to each other part of the time that we were both serving on the Planning and Zoning Board. So, someone's going to have to tolerate sitting next to me after this. But I really have enjoyed working with you. Your dedication to the city has been obvious, particularly regarding senior issues, promoting the use of solar energy whenever possible, the advancement of the Sister City program, as well as issues related to our budget. Rest assured, we're going to continue to work and stress on these important issues. But congratulations, Chris. I really have enjoyed working with you.[553.82][553.82](Applause)
Commissioner Slattery?
Thank you, Chris, and my friend. It's been such an honor to work with you. Chris has been, has served the city like Commissioner Larson has said, for many years, starting with the Planning and Zoning Board. You served for that committee for quite some time, became Vice Mayor and President of the Sister Cities. So, thank you for all that service and that you've done for our community. And you've served our community with pride and integrity, and that means so much to our community. He's served our seniors. He was a voice for our seniors in this community. And Chris also was an advocate for this Budget Advisory Committee that we have now, and also was, really stayed on top of us hiring that auditor. So, I thank you for that. Everything you've done, like I said, has been with pride and integrity for this community, and it's been a pleasure and an honor to work with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.[624.54][624.54](Applause)
Commissioner Terrapini?
Thank you. Chris, I'll also say that the last two years for me have been an honor and a pleasure to sit up here with you as a Commissioner and serve with you. I can honestly say not one meeting went by where you weren't thoroughly, beyond thoroughly, prepared and always championing for what you thought was in the best interest of this committee or of this community. As Commissioner Slattery said, you, one of your initiatives as a Commissioner was to create a Citizens Budget Advisory Committee. The night when you selected candidates, you didn't vote for me, but as you know, I later became the Chairman of the First Budget Advisory Committee. So, I'm appreciative and I'm thankful for that, and the experience that I got from that committee helped me gain the necessary tools to sit up here and serve with you. So, I congratulate you. I thank you. I'm honored to have served with you, and I look forward to hearing what you have in the future for your new chapter of your life. Thank you.
Thank you.[689.85][689.85](Applause)
Vice Mayor?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, fellow commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, it is difficult to believe that six years has passed since my first term as a member of our City Commission. The last six years, we had many challenges, and our city has seen many changes. It is with humility and pride that I can say that the City Commission has addressed the difficult issues and made the hard decisions that they have come before us. The credit of all these accomplishments of the last six years is not belong to one person, to one individual, but to the Commission as a whole. Starting with the Mayor down to the most genuine member, we all can take pride of job well done. It has been a pleasure to work with each member of the Commissioner, Mayor Archie, Commissioner Slattery, Commissioner Larson, and Commissioner Terrapini. It was a pleasure working with you, serving the people of Tarpon Springs. Also with the city staff, whose professionalism and job performance are second to none. We are fortunate to have a city staff headed by the best city manager in recent memory. I would like to publicly thank Mr. Licouris and the city staff for their dedication, their hard work, and the excellent performance. In addition to the city manager, I would like to thank the office manager, Mrs. Trish Hickey, for her outstanding work providing assistance to the Commissioners. To the city clerk's office, under the leadership of Ms. Irene Jacobs and Ms. Michelle Manousas, is second to none. Their input to the Commission is vital to the success, and during my time on the Commission, they have never failed to give 110 percent effort to ensure all Commissions have the information and the tools that we need to perform our public function. I want to thank you. I want to thank them all for the outstanding effort, for all the assistance that they provided to us the past six years. Another group of dedicated citizens who deserve our recognition and gratitude are all the volunteers. Volunteers of various departments, including volunteers serving the advisory boards. Without the volunteers and their inputs, the accomplishments that we had, like the recent budget challenges, would never have been met. And I wish to thank them all for their priceless input in making my tenure on Commission's success. Last but not least, I wish to remind the new Commission to continue to build the past efforts to enhance the lives of our senior citizens. The Commission and the city staff have worked very hard the last six years to find an answer to the problem of a senior transportation in our community. Erica transportation means our seniors will have more independence and better quality of life. We have started the effort, but we have long ways to go to complete it. Mr. Licouris, thank you for working with me on that.
Thank you.
Another area we worked very hard is to continue, is to have playgrounds for our children. The drive for neighborhood playgrounds needs to continue. To my replacement, Mr. Panther, I extend my congratulations on his election, and I wish him God's blessings to all his efforts. In leaving the Commission, I would like to thank the people of Tarpon Springs for giving me the opportunity to represent them. I want to thank you all. It has been an honor and a privilege to do so. Public service has been one of the most satisfying experiences anyone cannot detect. And towards that end, it is my intention to continue in the public service, especially with an eye on 2015 Mayor's race. Again, thank you.
We will now go to public comments on this item. Anybody that would like to speak, please come forward, state your name, address, and you would give up to four minutes.
Marty Peters, 1702 Heritage Oaks Court, Tarpon Springs. Speaking on behalf of the Budget Advisory Committee, because I am Chair of that committee, Mr. Alahousses, we'd just like to thank you for being such a strong advocate for setting up that committee. Hopefully, we have not let you down, that we have tried our best to try and make the city function more effectively and to make a positive contribution for the city, and we will try to do that as in your memory, as well as the memory of the others that supported the creation of that committee. But I know in particular, that's part of your legacy. Don't forget it.
Thank you.
Dr. Confolite Carney, Provost of the Tarpon Springs Campus of St. Petersburg College. I'd be totally remiss if I didn't stand and say a few good words about my good friend, Chris Alahoussos. If truth be known, I would, I've been marveling about how you have worked so hard for this city and for other endeavors. Having worked in corporate America myself, I know that you've put in a lot of hours there, and you're at work at seven, having run six or seven miles already. And at every event that I've ever gone to here, I see Chris there. And I just, you're a role model in terms of community service to this community and to our college, and I want to thank you dearly for that. I especially want to thank you for your leadership and with the college, working with the American Foundation for Greek Language and Culture. I want to thank you for your leadership of the Sister Cities, for raising scholarship funds and study abroad funds for our students to visit the various places in Greece. And I want to thank you just for being a very good friend in times of need for me personally and for St. Petersburg College. Thank you.
There's no other public comments?[1203.11][1203.11](Laughter)
We're going to get along tonight, Mr. Mayor. Jim Colianus, Tarpon Springs. I know that each board member up there tonight knows what newly elected Commissioner Bathurst's going to go through. And the test is, and it shows the most strength an elected individual can have, an elected individual can have, is that a friend's going to come up to you, as it has happened to each of you, and get in your face and disagree with what you said or did. And how you handle that, David, I hope it's like Chris always handled it. He took it on the chin, he walked away with a smile, and he always said, "Sorry, but I'm going to do it the way I think it's best for the people." It took me about three weeks to figure out he and I could not discuss politics and remain great friends like we are, because I'm on one end and he's way on the other, but he was on the right other side. Chris is a, for you people who don't really know him, he's an individual that you could ask a question to. And he and I worked together for a number of years, and he's one of my best friends. If I asked him how helium was made, he'd go check out all the books and come back in a week and tell me. That's how determined he is to learn and to help. And I've seen that the last six years. I'm proud to be his friend. I have to tell you an honest story. When he first thought about running, he came and saw me and he said, "Jim, I'm thinking about running for City Commission." And I said, "Ooh, I want you to do two things. One is, I want you to go to every meeting for three months, make sure this is what you want to do, because it's a very dedicated, hard job to do. And second, if you do, I promise to visit you at Ankle Manor every weekend."[1331.38][1331.38](Laughter) Chris is my friend, and I'm going to tell you in all honesty, he's part of the best friend this city has had in a number of years in terms of representing them. Chris, you did a great job. By his honor.
Any other public comments? Saying none, we'll go to our next item, which is our Consent Agenda. Our minutes, February 19th, February 20th, 19, 2013, Regular Session, February 27th, Executive Session, March 5th, Regular Session, and March 19th, Regular Session. Are there any public comments on any of these items? During the chair, will entertain a motion?
Move for approval.
Roll call?
Commissioner Terrapini?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Slattery?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Alahousses?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Our next item is Resolution, item number three, Resolution 2013-13, Ratification of Election Results.
Resolution 2013-13, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, ratifying and confirming the results of the municipal election held on March 12th, 2013, and providing for an effective date hereof. That's the reading of Resolution 2013-13 by Todd Alonely.
Are there any public comments on this item? Chair will entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call?
Commissioner Terrapini?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Slattery?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Alahousses?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. That concludes the current board regular session adjourned, signed and dialed at 6:55. We'll take a short break, and then we'll start the next regular session.
We actually move now?
Are we moving right now, Michelle?
Yes.
I guess that's it for now, that way.
It's been nice seeing you.
I'm out of here. I'm out of here.
Hey, Michelle, is this your idea, the new book?
No.
That's good.
All right, where am I going?
Hey, this is my, this is my chance to switch chairs.
Oh, thank you.
I like it. It's good to see you.
I don't know, but these seats are way better.
Yeah.
I don't know if I want to tell.
This is the fun side?
I think she's maybe.
Well, change.
Finish everything up.
Okay.
Everybody's good?
Good.
Chris have a pillow?
That's beautiful.
I don't know.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know.
I don't think.
Yeah, I think probably.
Yeah.
I like how we get.
Should I get my own?
Hey, you know, it's just about all of that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
She's got something on. I don't know what it says there.
What is that one?
Yeah, we have.
What are you selling?
Have you been to White?
So, what's, what's the McDonald's?
Oh.
Yeah, I think we're set.
Let me see if I have any change on me. I buy from the kids.
Yeah, I think probably.
She's got something on it. I don't know what it says there.
What are you selling? Yeah, I think we're set. Let me see if I have any change on me. I buy from the kids. I do. I have one. I have five as well.
But he's still holiday, though. Is that okay?
My last five.
Still holiday.
No, just Michael.
Oh, was both of them next to one another? I thought I got rid of you.
You did. Like, I'm such a...
No, you know why?
I'm way better this way.
We whisper to each other.
I'm way better this way.
We whisper to each other, and then the followers can have a problem with that.
Yeah, this is nice.
How you doing?
Is it going to be hard in that transition and how you're going to swear? David, and is it going to be here?
Is this what you were talking about?
If I could have everybody's attention, please? If I could have Mayor Archie and his family, please come forward. If I could have you raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye?
Aye.
Say your name.
David Archie.
Do you solemnly swear or...?
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support?
That I will support.
Protect and uphold?
Protect and uphold.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And of the State of Florida?
And of the State of Florida.
And the Charter and Laws?
And the Charter and Laws.
Of the City of Tarpon Springs?
Of the City of Tarpon Springs.
That I am duly qualified?
That I am duly qualified.
To hold the office?
To hold the office.
Of Mayor?
Of Mayor.
That I will faithfully perform?
That I will faithfully perform.